Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Rode.
Here.
Commissioner Holt.
Here.
Commissioner Berger.
Here.
Commissioner Camerota.
Here.
Commissioner H. Department.
Action.
We're bored.
Senior Planner Arnold O'Connell.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Welcome. We'll open public comment. And this item is for either public comment on any action item for gen-- or for general public comment, limited to three minutes. Anyone wishing to speak at this time? Hearing done. We'll move right along. Close the public comment. Approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes?
Move to approve as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Madam President, or Madam Chairman.
Either way.
I abstain from that.
Okay.
You got the motion.
All right. Then this motion carries. Announcements and committee reports?
Madam Chair, we got none.
All right. Informational items?
We don't have any information.
All right. We'll move on to public hearings. We're going to deal with item PCN 14030. Karen Melby?
Before you today is a request for tentative and final approval of an amendment to the Plan Development Handbook called Crestgate Pyramid Plan Development. What they're requesting to do is revise the standards to allow within the Area Four of this handbook personal storage. We may not have the docuCam today.
If we can.
You won't be able to see my little pretty. Oh, okay.
There we go. We were thinking we know where it's reported.
So, this is Pyramid Highway here. There's McCarran, and then Roberta Lane comes into. This is the outlined area that is the Crestgate Pyramid Plan Development. Because it's kind of confusing, I went through this afternoon and identified the four areas. The first area is Area One, which is where the Auto Zone, or it's an auto parts place, is located. Then you have the blue area here, which is Area Two, and that is the office buildings. Area Three, which was the last amendment, this is our third amendment on this handbook, and Area Three was an amendment to allow the personal storage and the RV storage, which is in Area Four, the green area. And what we're requesting today is to allow the option of either the RV storage in this area, or also, or personal storage. The revised handbook in this plan development maintains the integrity of the plan by sustaining the office residential character along Roberta Lane. Installing the streetscape in front of the personal storage as required by the handbook will soften the appearance of the personal storage from Roberta Lane. The proposed uses will generate less daily traffic than either all offices or previously proposed, the senior housing. The vehicular and pedestrian circulation is going to be maintained by this plan. There are no requests to change any of that. And the Crestgate Plan Development Handbook will function as a transitional land use between the existing shopping center where the railies is, along McCarran and Pyramid. Would also be a transitional use between the residential. As for the final handbook, this does not vary the proposed gross density, residential density or intensity, does not vary the proposed ratio of the residential to non-residential. It does not increase the floor area, but it could increase the total ground area if the RV parking is not constructed and you do the personal storage. However, it would be less than if it was going to be like senior housing or more offices, potentially. The personal storage construction would change the coverage from parking lot to a storage or buildings in parking lot. It is staff's opinion that the final draft of the Crestgate Pyramid Standards Plan Development Handbook does not substantially increase the ground coverage, and therefore complies with the five criteria. The handbook, the proposed amendments preserve the integrity of the plan and protect the neighboring residents. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'm not sure if it's a question or a comment, but when we made the agreement a couple years ago on Area Three to create the personal storage area, we took one of those, the area that is the bottom area in yellow, and required them to build an office building so that Roberta Lane itself was all office buildings. I don't know if that changes the Area Three to personal storage, office, plus business, plus office?
Area Three is not, is all, this is all developed, and this is an office building, but it was considered in part of-
So that was part of that. We don't need to make reference to that.
No. It was part of, and that's the way it stands in the handbook, is that this is all Area Three. But this is a constructed office building. And all of the Areas One, Two, and Three are actually built out. The only remaining area to be developed is Area Four.
Is the applicant here? And does the applicant wish to speak at this time? Please come forward.
Do you want to say?
Sure.
Okay.
And after musical chairs, if you induce yourself, please.
Yeah. Let him closer to the docuCam.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Ken Crater, representing the owner and applicant for this project. And we are in full agreement with the staff report as written. And Doug is correct. We made a commitment when we came before you a couple of years ago to build that last office building along Roberta in Area Three. And that is the office building that sits right here. Not only is it constructed, but it's now fully leased. And I'm actually very proud to have been a part of this team since the inception of this entire project. In fact, when the Lenz bought the property, they also sold off the land, which is now the shopping center. So I've been involved in it for a long time, and I think it's pretty clear they've lived up to all their commitments from day one, and really have done an outstanding job with this project. So we appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight, and hope that you find in favor of this project. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Madam Chair. Ken, in the Area Four, are you going to have landscaping in there?
Yes, yes. We'll match the landscaping and the architecture of the units in Area Three.
You know, one thing I mentioned in the study session also, it's a very well-maintained project, so.
Yeah, in fact, it's funny. I've been out there a couple of times and seen families near the little detention base and in the area, near Area Three, just picnicking.
Yeah.
So I think that speaks to the quality of the landscaping and the maintenance.
Yeah, it's very good. I appreciate that, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to say I concur. Beautiful project. It's done well. You know, you can see it as we've watched going through these faces. Phase Three was beautiful, and it really looks nice.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak on the matter, subject to the limitations and conditions of Article Four, Section Four of the Rules of Procedure? Please come forward and identify yourself. And at the end, would you give staff a card? Thank you.
My name is Peter Adams. I'm a resident on Galtway, just to the west of the project. And I would concur for the most part with the quality of the development as it's happened so far. I would like to say that I've had to bug the developers and Karen Melby to get the final gate built at the end of Galtway, which maintains pedestrian access and stops vehicular access through to the project. And that has been done. The landscaping is still to be finished, obviously, in light of the new development there. But that is done. I'm grateful to see it. I'm just curious to know how the development would actually proceed. There's a very steep grade down from McCarran to the sort of more level area, and then there's some space where the, obviously, the storage is going to go. Curious to know how that's going to be walled off or fenced off in any way. I'm mindful of floods that swept through Galtway several, many years back, and any impediment to water would be a problem for the residents at the corner there of Galt and Eleven. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone here could provide an answer to that? Thank you.
The area that he's speaking about along McCarran Boulevard is this steep-sloped area in there. And essentially, what we've done, as you can see, there's a large landscaped area in here, is we've simply set back the storage units quite a ways away so we don't have to do any sort of significant disturbance to that slope. A good portion of that is actually N dot right-of-way. So we will have a wall in there, but there'll be significant screening and setbacks, so we don't have to have any sort of major structure to retain that existing slope.
So you stay south of, you know, went out there. Essentially, there's sound wall at the top, and also the signs, so you stay below that area?
Yes, correct.
Is south of that?
Correct.
Will the wall that you build be just a continuation of the architecture on the current wall?
Yes, yeah. Everything within this Unit Three will comply with the handbook standards, and the personal storage units will match the architecture of those in Unit Three.
And then there was concern about any kind of flooding or anything coming?
Yeah, we obviously had to do a hydrology and drainage report in compliance with Spark City Code and Spark's requirements, and we've done that. And we'll have to update that before we can submit for a building permit for anything that we do within Area Four, to make sure that all the requirements are met.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else under public comment? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions for the staff or applicant? All right, hearing done. We'll call for motion.
I'll be happy to make a motion. I moved forward a recommendation to the City Council for tentative and final approval of a request for an amendment to the Crestgate Pyramid Plan Development Handbook associated with PCN 14030, adopting findings PD-1 through PD-21 and the facts supporting those findings as set forth in the staff report. Because the request includes a final approval, the planning commission does not recommend that City Council require a bond at this time, as stated in NRS 27A dot 590.
Second, 490.
490, excuse me, as amended.
Can we get another second to that?
Second.
Okay. Okay, move to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Hearing done. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is PCN 14034. Karen?
Good evening, planning commissioners. Karen Melby, senior planner. Before you is a master plan amendment to change the land use designations from neighborhood park, public institution, five dwelling units per acre in open space, two mixed-use residential, low, medium residential, medium residential, and neighborhood park on five different properties located in the Kylie Ranch area. It's a total of forty-three point two acres. There are actually seven areas that are being amended in this. The first area is number one here, which is currently neighborhood park, and they're requesting to make it LMA, LMR. Then number two is the neighborhood park here, and they're requesting to make that MUR, along with the PI piece here, so MUR. The five dwelling units per acre down here is going to be split between the MR and the LMR. And then this area out here, which is about, is eighteen, almost nineteen acres, would be partially open space, and also, you can see on this exhibit, it would be the neighborhood park. They're going to remove the two neighborhood parks at the request of the city. City recently adopted a new parks plan, and we are moving away from having neighborhood parks and looking at more community parks. And so the city has requested that they eliminate the two neighborhood parks. And so that's part of what this request is today. So this, all this piece here would become mixed-use residential. Then you've got the neighborhood park down here, a piece of open space, and then the rest would be going into the LMR. Staff finds this in compliance with our master plan, and we recommend approval. Any questions? I'd be happy to answer them. It is a little confusing.
We talked at the study session about the potential issues of flooding in the land that's been designated as parkland. Can you talk a little bit about that?
There is some areas out here that would be flooded. Generally, the floodplain line follows this jagged line there. But there is a possibility that the eastern portion of the park could be flooded. But when we go into final design for the park, we would look at if they're, you know, more closely at where areas would be flooded, and design the park so that any facilities could be flooded that would be located in that floodplain area. But this is a community park, so it would have things like tennis courts, ball fields, things like that. Potentially have those, depending on what is the city determines that they want to have in this park. And that's part of the Parks Commission's decision.
Is the applicant here? Does the applicant wish to speak? Please come forward and identify yourself for the record. Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, Mike Raylith, Rubicon Design Group, here on behalf of KM Two Development. Lois Brown with KM Two Development is also here with me tonight. We concur with Karen's staff report, and she did a good job explaining. I would also like to note that we did hold a neighborhood meeting on this and invited a little over 500 people. We had about 15 people show up, and it was very well-received at the neighborhood meeting as well. So, here to answer any questions you might have.
You know, Mike, one thing I liked about this project is that you're taking the two parks that were two separate, different areas, combining it into one larger park?
Right.
Which is going to be right by the regional, proposed regional trail.
Correct. This would connect with the regional trail and would also join the wetlands area. So even though it's a nine-acre park, it would have much larger field.
Right, right.
Because it borders that permanent.
I thought that was an excellent idea, doing that.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And Commissioners, any questions for the staff or the applicant? Hearing none. We'll call for a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I moved forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for certification of a master plan amendment for PCN 14034, based on the findings MP-1 through MP-4, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Second.
Move to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Hearing done. Motion carries. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck with your project.
Next item on the agenda, PCN 14035, City of Sparks. Tim Thompson?
Good evening, planning commissioners. Tim Thompson, senior planner, for the record. There are a couple of components to this particular item. The first is a master plan amendment to change the boundary of the transit-oriented development corridor, as well as remaster planning the six affected parcels, and then rezoning those parcels to the comparable zoning designation. The site is located on the northeast, or northwest of the intersection of East Prater Way and East I Street. There are, as I mentioned, six properties associated with that. The, for orientation purposes here, you've got a residential parcel here, this parcel owned by the Truckee Metals Water Authority, and then these four parcels, this being residential, this being an existing fast food restaurant, an auto parts store, and an existing medical Currently, the properties are master-planned mixed-use commercial. They are within the TOD corridor. They are master-planned, the mixed-use commercial. And then you can see the blue line here is the current boundary of the TOD. As we've all become more familiar with the transit-oriented corridors, I think that we're becoming more aware of what properties within the city are more appropriate for the more intense, dense type of development that the TOD contemplates. I think what we've learned is to focus more on nodes rather than corridors. Sparks has a relatively large corridor area as it goes Prater to Sparks Boulevard, back down to Victorian, Kitski, Prater area. So it is a quite large corridor. Within that corridor, there are some activity centers that have been identified. The closest activity center to this particular area is just to the, just to the east. Essentially, both of those shopping centers to the north and to the south on Prater, east of these properties, are designated as those corridors. These properties are small. They are built out, with the exception of the Tamwa parcel. However, it is staff's understanding that at some point in time, that parcel will be utilized as part of the Truckee Metals Water Authority groundwater system. There is an existing well on site, and so it's not anticipated that at this time any more intense or dense type of development will occur on that particular piece of property. The four properties that front Prater Way are relatively small for commercial properties. They are built out, one being residential, the other three being commercial uses. And so what staff is proposing to do is to remove these areas from the TOD, as we don't believe that these areas are appropriate to focus our energy on as far as development in the TOD. The proposed land use change would be to modify the line, so we come out here to I Street, down I Street to Prater, and then picks it back up here. The four properties along Prater would be remaster planned to general commercial. The Tamwa parcel will be master planned to public facility, and then the residential off of I Street would be master planned to low-density residential. I will point out that prior to the adoption of the TOD, these were the land uses that were in effect. And so what we're doing is taking it back to what it was before, in essence. Along with this request are the rezonings. Currently, all six properties are zoned TOD, and this proposal includes changing the zoning for the parcels along Prater to C2, which is the comparable zoning district to the general commercial land use. The zoning to the Tamwa piece to public facility to PF, which is again comparable. And then the residential piece to R16, which is the appropriate zoning district for the low-density residential. With that, staff is recommending that you approve the master plan amendment and forward a recommendation for certification onto the City Council, and then also forward a recommendation of approval for the requested zone changes as well. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Just thought after the study session, it seems unlikely, but if Tamwa at some point considered that to be excess land, would they have the ability to sell that, or would it be restricted by the public facilities designation?
Good question. They would at least be limited to the public facility land use designation, and really the public facility, the PF zoning, and the permitted uses within that zoning district. However, that's not to say that if a different land use was proposed that met the locational criteria in the master plan, that-
They would come back.
That they could come back and master plan it something else. I can tell you that it was previously office professional, I believe, land use designation, and that was changed to the public facility. So there's already been a master plan and a zone change for that prior, even prior to TOD. So they would be restricted initially, but that would not necessarily preclude them from applying to the city for an amendment, a master plan amendment and/or zone change.
Tim, I had some questions, as you know, of this whole area, not just specifically the site, but in the area of the TODs. And I was asked you some questions about RTC and about transit system. Did you talk to RTC?
I did put in a call to RTC, and I did receive a message shortly before the meeting The Prater Fourth Street project is not only the BRT, but also includes the proposed improvements to the road, essentially from the downtown Reno Transit Station into Sparks. Whether it goes to Pyramid, or goes to Fifteenth or Sixteenth Street, and then heads south to Centennial Plaza, that's kind of the, it sounds like the intent is for it to at least not go any farther than Pyramid at this point in time. Those, or that project, would be slated to start construction in 2017. Those improvements would include the RTC Rapid Transit Service, improved sidewalks, bike facilities, and major street improvements between Evans Avenue and Pyramid Way. The fourth Prater Bus Rapid Transit project itself was added to, or is proposed to be added to, the program of projects through the RTC. And they're in the process of looking for money and grant funding to complete the project. So a lot of the, a lot of the grants and federal funding, there needs to be a local match. And so they're in the process of working through the financials on that as, and working on grant funding for those improvements. So I would say it's a couple of years off.
Couple of years off. I guess one of my concerns was if you take things out of the TOD, of them trying to get federal money, are you, are you reducing their chances of being able to get federal money when you take, it's not just a small piece, but the whole corner there, you know, we're talking much forty-five, fifty acres probably in that whole corner. If we start taking pieces of this land or the total thing out of the TOD, are we reducing their chance of being able to get federal money? Because the density won't be there, or they can't prove, as we start taking the zoning and reducing densities, maximum densities that they can put in this area.
Based on the limits of the project, going up to Pyramid at the most, at least right now, and the site being located to the east, I would say, in this case, probably not. Certainly, that's something that could factor into the overall concept. But one thing that I would point out- I would point out is
Sure.
Let's see if we can zoom in anymore. As you, as you look at the, as you look at the aerial photo,
Right.
What you see is you see a lot of parking lot. Those two shopping centers have a very large parking field, and those are really the more prime locations for increased density or intensity. Is, you basically have, I mean, aside from bare dirt,
Yeah.
There probably isn't anything easier to develop than a parking lot. So, you know, from that standpoint, and that coincides with the TOD plan, which identifies that area as the activity center.
Right.
And so, you know, I think if you want to try and compare Virginia Street BRT, which is, is a corridor, and there's a lot of activity
Right.
within that corridor, and I think that there's a difference between Reno and Sparks in that Fourth Prater corridor, in that you really have more of those nodes versus that linear type of intense development. You've got, even if you look at Virginia Street, you can look at the different nodes, if you will, downtown, midtown, probably around Plum or the Pepper Mill, Convention Center, and then you get down to Meadowwood Mall. So even in that concept, you may have a corridor, but there's still the focus on the nodes.
Right.
And I'm talking with my hands. So, you know, to take these six properties out that are already largely developed, or that are developed, with the exception of the one parcel, they're all relatively small. What kind of density or intensity can those properties handle without consolidation, let's say? So.
Yeah, and I understand. So you'd still think that whole general area would be a node in your, would be one of the nodes following down there, right?
Correct.
Next thing is, so I see in your report and your analysis, essentially what you say, the proposal is to effectively rescind application of the TOD, of the general, in the area that you're talking about, or I'll let you open it up first here. You're talking about essentially bounding by Prater. You're talking about I Street. You're talking about Vista. You're talking about Sparks Boulevard, Prater. You're talking not just a small piece of property, and that's my concern. You're saying essentially the, this, approval of this, if you see the last sentence in, essentially, this could be considered a step in that vein. And essentially, you're talking about getting this whole area out of the TOD, is what I see in that, in that first sentence. It's on page five. So I'm more concerned about the whole thing, not just as four pieces of property that we know will go to C2.
I think, I think the long and the short of it is, is that when you look at our TOD plan, perhaps it's just too large of an area.
Yeah.
And that our focus should be more on the specific nodes versus the entire corridor. I think that what you saw within the last year, 18 months, was you saw the city remove that employment district out of the TOD. So that area bounded by Sparks, Prater, Vista, that area be removed from the TOD. So, you know, the question was, is this particular area appropriate for the TOD development? And so, again, as I, as we move along, and I think what we're going to do is refine the boundaries of the TOD even more. I don't think, at the end of the day, we're going to have as large of a corridor as we do today. I think that corridor will likely shrink, and that we will more, we will focus more on the activity centers and the nodes than trying to implement things across the board throughout the whole corridor.
All right. At this point, we'll open for public hearing. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this? Hearing none, seeing none. We'll close the public hearing and give a break to the commissioners. I'm going to send just questions for the staff. Hearing none. We have two items here to have motions on, so please keep that in mind as you make the motions. So I'll open for motion on the master plan amendment section first.
I'll make a motion for the master plan amendment.
All right.
I move to approve the master plan amendment resolution number 205, and forward a request of certification to the City Council for the master plan amendment associated with PCN 14035, adopting findings MP1 through MP4, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
I'm opposed.
All right. The motion carries. Thank you. The rezones, motion?
I'll make the motion.
All right.
I move I move to forward a recommendation of approval to City Council to rezone six parcels totaling approximately 6.66 acres from the TOD mixed-use commercial to 0.32 acres of R16, which is a single-family residential designation, and 3.41 acres of PF, which is a public facility designation, and 2.93 acres of C2, which is a general commercial designation, associated with PCN 14035, adopting findings Z1 through Z3, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
A second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
I'll be there, opposed.
Okay.
Since I'm opposed with the last one, I think.
All right. We have one opposing vote, but the motion does carry. Thank you very much. All right, on to our general business. Public comment? Anyone in the public wishing to speak? Hearing none, seeing none. That section is closed. Comments from the commissioners? Hearing none? Well, I heard one, when it was "Let's Go Home," so I take it there'd be a motion.
That's a motion, "Let's Go Home."
Can we have a second to the adjournment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Motion carries.
Great.